Because of the election, but I can tell you that if you're wondering about how things are, all of the people who registered, who voted at the polls, those votes have all been counted. We are about halfway through. We've got about 77,000 of the mail-in and absentee ballots counted, and we have about another 77,000 to still count. But we are going right ahead, whether or not anybody has sleep, and we are grateful to many staff who have been here over the past 48 hours getting ready and helping us to count those. And we can talk about that more a little bit later, but for right now, our row offices would like to quickly introduce yourselves.
Hi, Judy. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. We have some brief public comments now on anything on the agenda. I'll ask the solicitor, are there any online comments?
No, Commissioner.
Are there any agenda item comments here today in the room? I'm peeking around the camera to see. No, no public comment. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the October 21st, 2020 meeting. On the consent agenda, we have items one through eighteen, through eighteen. Is there a motion for approval?
There's a move.
Is there a second? Any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Moving to the regular agenda, first thing we have is 19, the coroner. And this is with VerdiQ Software LLC out of Morgan Hill, California, approving the contract for the coroner information system needed due to COVID-19 pandemic, subject to final approval by the county solicitor in the amount of $286,960. And our coroner is here, Meredith Buck. If you'd like to come on up and talk right into the microphone and tell us a little bit about this.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity. But just before I talk about the case management system that we're here for today, I do need to just acknowledge all of the work, dedication, and effort that went into this campaign election process. I got to witness it firsthand yesterday, and I know how I'm feeling today. So I can't imagine how the Commissioners are feeling, how our COO is feeling. She's not here, but Gail and all the others who...
We're propping her up over there.
I know the amount of hours, and I know the amount of steps that they all put in, and I didn't even get near that. But they didn't sit down, they didn't stop. And unless you actually see what goes on behind the scenes, you can't even imagine. So my hat goes off to all of you. And, you know, this was such an unprecedented task, and you did it. So, congrats. Anyway, about the case management system here for the coroner's office, I don't think people are aware at how and what gets presented to the coroner's office. Typically, it's anything outside of a naturally occurring death, unless there is not a doctor that's willing to certify the death, then we do get called into some of them. But the one big exception to that rule is any death known or suspected to be due to a contagious disease and constituting a public hazard. And I am reading that directly out of the statute. So needless to say, COVID-19 certainly fits this bill. So every, every death due to COVID here in Bucks County did come through the coroner's office. And that was an increased caseload of almost 600 cases. And I know everybody questions how our numbers differ. Public health numbers are differing here in Bucks County than coroner cases because people don't realize that the Department of Health is counting the deaths of the residents of Bucks County. So those deaths can be occurring in outside counties. The coroner's office deals strictly with the deaths that occur here in Bucks County. So we could be dealing with residents that live outside of our county. So that's where you're going to get the slight differences in reporting numbers, here at least in our county. But I will tell you that Bucks County Department of Health and Bucks County Coroner's Office have been working very closely, and we can identify which numbers are which. So we have been very, very diligent in that. But, but with, with this increased caseload, the Pennsylvania Department of Health put an added mandate onto the death reporting. So this time around, we had to do things electronically so that it went directly to the state. Our system is not capable of doing that directly. So it was double process, left room for errors. And, and so our new system, as I said, just isn't capable, I mean, our old system is just not capable of handling that. So the, it's got to be done through what's called EDRS for short, and it stands for the Electronic Death Reporting System. With the help of our new, and I don't know if he's here, our new CIO, John Regula, my assigned VA, Suzanne Higgin, and we selected VerdiQ. We looked at a couple different options that are used across the state of Pennsylvania, and we see this as having the most flexibility with the added needs that are going to come over time. And with this bridging to the electronic systems that we are now going to be mandated to report with. So this will allow improvements to our operations, and it will support any Pennsylvania initiative around this EDRS, and also with PennDOT, their automated reporting system. And ultimately, it will help with the, the public health reporting in the wake of not only COVID-19, but whatever else might come our way. So hopefully, the Commissioners will approve this and understand why we need it. And I will tell you that they've all listened to me and, and my rantings of why we need this. So thank you kindly.
Thank you. Anything questions?
No.
And next, we have a number 20, General Services of Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority in Doylestown, at revenue of $10 million, with the sale of the dumb wastewater treatment plant located at 1720 East St. Row in Doylestown. And this is subject to final approval by the council. We still have to do what we must to work on that. Are there any questions on that? Is there a motion for approval? So I should have been down to the corner to listen. Is there a motion?
There's a move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mike, thank you. So I asked for a motion, and the motion came from Commissioner Harvey, from Commissioner DeGraalmo, seconded by Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor? Do that again. Aye. And going back up to the coroner's office, there was no questions, but is there a motion for approval?
There's a move.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And 20B, New Horizon Property Management Incorporated, Levittown, the approval of the purchase of the property located at 1206 State Road, incorporated for transitional housing needed during the COVID-19 pandemic, $344,900. Any questions from the board on that? Questions? Is there a motion?
There's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then there are personnel actions to come before the board. Are there any questions from the board on personnel actions?
I don't have any.
Seeing none, is there a motion for approval?
There's a move.
Gene?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, everybody's a little tired. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And board appointments. Commissioner Harvey, do we have any today?
Yeah, several. We have a couple of, three seats opening up on the library board. At this time, we have two. People would like to enter their names and a motion. Talked to the managing director of the Bucks County Library, as well as one of the board members. And they do say that their board, you know, while certainly made up of some, some good people, some have been there for quite a while, and the board does see a need for some increased, I guess, expertise in certain areas, one of which would be, you know, someone with a legal background, another also someone that might have some kind of an engineering background. As the library looks at some of their facilities, you know, having a board members who could give that kind of expertise about how best to, you know, renovate a library building somewhere in the county, or take a look at some contracts that the library's looking into. And so would like to enter into motion Mr. Tony Bush and Steve Sattlemeyer for appointments to the library board for a three-year term to end 11/1/2023.
Is there a motion for second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike?
I'm just going to leave it on.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Well, I mean, I'll do the, the workforce development board is also something we have quite a few seats open on that board. Some are, we have four reappointments. The workforce development board is a state mandate, and areas like Bucks County that have a workforce development board, it really is designed to bring together people with backgrounds in business and education, different kinds of businesses experience, whether it's owning a business, whether it's working, you know, in certain fields professionally, so that you can help the county and our workforce development board develop, working with our schools, working with private partners and public partners, ways to better train the workforce here in Bucks County, to cut down on things like unemployment, to really do what we can to help people find jobs. Obviously, we know the pandemic has had an impact on people's livelihoods. Many people have been able to keep their jobs. Some have seen salaries, you know, lessened, hours cut back. Some people are working harder, even though they're working from home. And so it is certainly a time where we need to focus on what we can do to help people get the jobs that they need to provide the life they want to give themselves and their families. We do have four reappointments at this time. Anita Diggs, Mary Beth Ferguson, Aaron Lukos, and Kevin Morrow, that I'd like to enter in. This is also a three-year term to end 11/1/2023. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you for your service on the state workforce investment board as well.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Moving to other civics. Does anybody else have any other civics for today? We have two annual contributions. One is for $1,000 to the Garden of Reflection, and the other is our annual $30,000 contribution to the Bristol Riverside Theater. Is there a, I can put that in a motion. Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the chief operating officer's report. Ms. McEvan?
Well, just quickly, thank our Board of Elections staff for their time yesterday, today, throughout the week, but also to our, all of our county staff that participated yesterday and throughout the morning, early morning hours. A lot of time, effort, all very much appreciated. Couldn't have done it without you. You were all awesome. And I think, I think this is a lesson learned for all of us. Twenty-four hours staying awake is a long time. But they did it, and, and we're proud. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The solicitor's report.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll echo everything that's been said about the incredible work by the Board of Elections and all the county staff. Just to keep the public informed about some of the litigation that's been going around with the election. We've talked before about the litigation brought against the county and others by the Trump campaign. We were successful in federal court in that litigation, which concerned challenges to how the county and the Commonwealth are conducting the elections. We were sued again yesterday by the Trump campaign, this time here in Bucks County in the Court of Common Pleas. This time, the complaint concerned the county's transparency in allowing the observers who are present during the pre-candice to have a chance to see the ballots that were being put aside for review by the board, ballots that seemed to have some apparent issue or challenge. Some of the observers were looking at those and making efforts to contact voters to give them a chance to cast provisional ballot. And some of the other observers provided information to the Trump campaign that resulted in that, in that lawsuit. After a lengthy hearing in the Court of Common Pleas, we were successful. The case was thrown out, and, and the county's practices continued throughout the day. And I'll just take a point personally to thank all of the, all of the people across the county, particularly in the law department, and our elections solicitor, Jessica Banner, again, for their outstanding work and that result.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to Commissioner's comments, and I'm just going to jump in and go first here. I'm, I'm going to forget someone in this, but I just have to take a moment and thank everybody for the election. I'm not sure if anybody can understand what this has been like. This is the first major election that we've ever used the new machines, where people are actually doing a paper ballot. So that was a pretty huge thing to take on. It is the first time we've had any kind of a major, like, or even a general election with write-in, write-in ballots, and lots of, lots of things happening with that. We've had all kinds of equipment brought in here that we've never used before, that we've all gotten down pat, and has been, you know, wonderful to help us with. But it's been a yeoman's effort. And as I looked around the past couple days, I actually feel like I was the most inadequate person that was in that room. There was so much work that people did. And last night, our Department of Corrections staff came in, and like, they just whipped around, and our 911 staff was in, children and youth stepped up, juvenile probation, adult probation, our public defenders. I don't want to forget it, the youth center. All of our row offices sent people over. It was just, and the taxpayers here should know that everybody in this county stepped up, jumped in, and did what they needed to do to make sure that your vote counted and make sure that it was an honest and sincere effort. We have, our COO, Margie McEvan, and our clerk, Gail Humphries, we just kind of dumped this on you. Learn how to do this. And I don't think any of us have stayed up all night since we were 20, but you guys have probably been up two nights, and I know how difficult that is. I also want to thank both of my colleagues for being here, what they've done, Larry King, Jim O'Malley, Jess Vanderkam in our solicitor's office. All, everybody did a yeoman's effort. But I have to say that I am not sure that a Commissioner has given more effort and more energy in this than Commissioner Harvey has. So hats off to you, and I really want to thank you for that. Having said that, Commissioner DeGraalmo, do you have any comments for today?
I'm going to use the word you just used, Commissioner, inadequate. I mean...
Right there, here we are.
That's how I, when I look at the, the hard work and the effort of everybody that was involved with Board of Elections, and Tom, and you mentioned Gail, Margie, and Joe, I mean, I, it was just incredible to watch. Under an enormous amount of pressure, and an enormous amount of challenges, because we had never done this before in a general election. I mean, it was just heartwarming to see how many of the employees and the row officers stood up and came in and pitched in and helped out. I know Tom Freitag, I mean, I think he's gone on 45 minutes' sleep, and he's still there. Because as you saw from the press release, we still have 76, 77,000 mail-in ballots to count yet. And again, you mentioned Commissioner Harvey. I mean, he was up all night, and I came in this morning about 8:00, and he was down there pushing carts around and moving ballots. I mean, not just watching, but actively engaged in doing stuff. And I, I just want to thank you, Bob, as well, for really doing a terrific job. One point I want to know, and this comes under, and I'll just finish up with this, this comes under, that we want to make sure every ballot counts, and everybody that puts the effort and the time in the voting, that their vote is counted. And there was a, a lot of discussion about these naked ballots that come in. And the naked ballots are the ballots where people do not put their ballot in a security envelope inside the first envelope and actually seal it, and don't write anything on the security envelope that might identify them. And there was a lot of worry that there were going to be a lot of those come in, and that we were going to have to not count them. I, I asked for the count this morning. We counted 77,000 ballots so far, and I asked for the count this morning, and I think it was only 380 naked ballots that had been set aside so far. And there's still a chance that some of them might count, a few of them still might count. But if I do the math right, if it was 1% of 77,000, that would be 770. So if there's 380, that would be roughly maybe a half a percent of all the ballots that came in were actually put aside because they were naked ballots. And I, I think that is really, really good, because I, I think there were some people that feared that the naked ballot could be 5% or 10% of the number of ballots that came in. And to get it to a point where it was a half a percent, I think that, that's really good. Good to make sure that every vote count, and good for democracy. So I just want to commend everybody involved, everybody at the Board of Elections and the staff for doing a terrific job. Thank you.
This is the longest I've sat down since I drove here yesterday morning. But, no, it's like, just echoing everything that Commissioner Seagull, Commissioner DeGraalmo said regarding the staff here at the county. You know, and, and, you know, I really don't deserve any credit for just sort of, like, remaining standing, you know, for longer than, than some other people did. You know, Margie McEvan, and Gail Humphrey, and Tom Freitag really were the ones who put together a plan. It was Liz Gates, you know, Margie, Ms. McEvan's assistant, who did a tremendous amount of work in terms of putting together a schedule, and reaching out, and sort of shaking the trees, and finding volunteers falling all over the place, and then putting them in the right spots. We had people like, you know, Randy Miller, who sits sort of behind a monitor. You don't really see him on TV, but he's here helping us, you know, make these meetings happen, and has been really, you know, very, very invaluable down there, taking on the leadership role. And it's, it was really encouraging, as Commissioner Seagull said, you know, every four hours, every eight hours, you'd have a new wave of people coming in from one of the different agencies or departments in this county. And it seemed, I, you know, of course, I didn't do a checklist or play, you know, employee, you know, bingo, but I imagine that, you know, pretty much every agency or department had somebody down there doing something. And if they weren't in the Board of Elections, they were performing services like our Sheriff's Department, who were running literally all over the county, delivering, you know, ballots, if they were running low on ballots, delivering different kinds of supplies, if polling places were low on supplies. We had the other, the staff of the Board of Elections that works in the warehouse, who were working to go out and fix machines. And obviously, you know, they coordinated delivery, they coordinated picking up. You know, it's, it's something that, several, several months ago now, we had, we were contacted by HBO, because they wanted to send a camera crew here to basically sort of monitor our election. And it's like, you know, and they, you know, it was kind of, you know, not something we really entertained a whole lot. We really didn't entertain it when they said, well, we really just, you know, kind of, you know, hoping for a lot of drama, and a lot of like, you know, kind of things that would really kind of, and you know, that was a real, a real quick no to that proposal. But after having, you know, gone through it, you know, I, I really wonder if having them there, you know, or some kind of crew there, would have really given people the kind of behind-the-scenes look that you really need to have to appreciate it. You know, it's, it's something, it's been fashionable to, you know, criticize government and say how bad government is, and government's terrible, and government's the problem, et cetera. But, you know, there were a whole lot of people last night, members of this county government, who came in on a day off or night off. And yes, they got paid for their four hours or eight hours, but, you know, they certainly didn't have to. They didn't have to be here from 2:30 in the morning to 6:30 in the morning, you know, sitting in a chair, you know, opening envelopes for four hours, nonstop. And some of them staying longer, saying, I can, I can hang out a little more and do some more if you want me to. Or sure, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll do that job, I'll do this job. And if they hadn't done that, you know, we certainly wouldn't have the vote totals we have now, and, you know, we'd probably look, you know, even, even worse than we already do, probably for, in terms of exhaustion. So Joyce, just really, you know, want to thank all them. We do have to acknowledge that, you know, while we want every election to run perfectly, you know, this one didn't. We did have a few polling places where there were machines that weren't up and running as quickly as we wanted them to. There were a couple, two polling places where there were issues with the ballots being printed slightly off-center, which meant them, they didn't go into the machines and weren't read as easily. We fixed those as quickly as we could. We did have all our polling places open, and we had them fully staffed. But unfortunately, you know, we can't control if people call that morning of election and say, you know what, I can't work today after all. Or if three of them do that at a single poll, which happened at a couple different polls yesterday. And when everyone lined up at 6:30 in the morning, or 6:00 in the morning, or 5:30 in the morning, because they wanted to vote, you know, when that, when they got in line, we believed that we had enough staff, and we found out soon after that that staff didn't show up. You know, it's, it makes me think about, you know, when your, when your kids are little, they're playing soccer, they're playing T-ball, they're playing Pee-wee football or basketball, or whatever they're playing. And there's usually a sign up somewhere that if, you know, if you don't like the way your coach is, your kid's coach is, is doing, you know, there's a sign-up sheet at the clubhouse. So, you know, it's easy to sort of, you know, be in line and complain about, oh, these people should work faster, and I don't know why they're not doing this very well. And, you know, it's, we're always looking for volunteers. And, you know, it's, we're always looking for volunteers who can help us. You do get paid, actually, it's not even volunteer, you do get paid for it. And certainly, if, you know, the Board of Elections is always looking for people to help. So, if you're interested in helping out, as dozens and dozens, hundreds, real, actually hundreds, of county employees helped and are continuing to help today, you know, we certainly would welcome you. Don't call today to give the Board of Elections a chance, a chance to catch up on everything they need to catch up on, but, you know, there'll be another election in the spring, and we're going to need to have polling places filled. And if you think you want to help us and you want to make the process work more smoothly, we'd love to have you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, moving on to brief public comment. Do we have, we have an online comment? Is there any? Commissioner Warren? Switched it up on you.
Two, two quick points. One, I say this in absolute sincerity, having been at the polls yesterday from 7:00 to 7:00 in the morning. I commend you all for the election we're getting through yesterday. I appreciate your comment. I say Middletown Fire Company was a problem, but the fact of the matter is, I sincerely appreciate the work of all of you involved.
Thank you.
My question is, in 90 seconds left, do you all see this as a one-off effort? I have been watching elections for a long time, and I do not recall really where so many people had to stay up all night long to see that the election process worked and will not have results for some number of hours, perhaps days, yet. The state, you all are far, far seeing the state, but my goodness. But do you see this as a one-off type thing, that because it was new, because it was working, or do you see every election, innumerable number of employees staying up two, one or two days at a time, and everybody having to go like this? Is this a learning process or something?
So, I think we probably each have.
And remember, excuse me, I, Commissioner, remember my first comment. I sincerely understand and appreciate what went into this, but is it a one-time off or would we?
So, I'm going to go left first to Commissioner G. Geralomo, because he can really speak to this, but I will say, it better not be a one-off. Our state better step up and fix things, so we don't have to do this.
I'm in here.
I know you meant here, but it's because of the state that we had these issues.
Yep. Andy, we are one of only four states, I think there's approximately 40 states that do mailing, some type of mailing, balling, and we're only one of the four states, and I think two of them are Alabama and Mississippi, I'm not sure who the other one is, that are only allowed to start canvassing the ballots on Election Day. I watched Governor DeWine, the Republican governor of Ohio, and he was asked that question, and he says, you know, we start 10 days before Election Day, opening the envelope, scanning the ballot. So, I think the most important thing we could do, to stop this going for two or three days and people staying up 24 hours and working, is for the legislature and the governor, I mean, they've got to get an agreement on this. And again, I said this before, this is not, this is not an advantage for Republicans or Democrats. This is an advantage for the people of Bucks County and the state of Pennsylvania, to give us time before election, that be able to open the envelopes, extract the ballot, and start to scan without actually tabulating the vote, because I think the right thing to tabulate the vote is after the polls close on Election Day at 8:00. But we need five or seven or even 10 days before election, and if we have that, that's a common sense thing to do, it's the right thing to do for the state of Pennsylvania. And hopefully, after this is over and we get into next year with the new legislative session, that that's something they're going to take up as soon as possible, because absolutely the right thing to do, and I think that will help us out.
Replacing ourselves in a room in Alabama and Mississippi. They're in their homes.
Yep. Yep. That should tell you a little something. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, the three of us are really in lockstep on this. And we've, as you know, Commissioner D. Geralomo put together a task force with, you know, a bipartisan task force to really appeal to his former colleagues in Harrisburg, that, you know, there really needs to be change in this law, and unfortunately, they, they didn't really feel like doing that. And, you know, certainly what we're experiencing is not only a problem caused by a law that puts us, you know, gives us timetables, we, you know, we really can't meet considering what we now have to do, and obviously, a federal government that's been underfunding the postal service for quite some time, and, and put those, you know, together and, you know, stick us in the middle. And we have to deal with all of that. We have to deal with the, with the people concerned and panicked about, you know, lines, you know, down the block at this building because, you know, they're worried about, you know, whether or not the postal service is going to deliver this, and the time crunch on us as we try to mail out things because we're not able to mail them out as soon as we'd like to, because the state sets guidelines that we can't even print about until just a certain number of weeks before the election. You know, it's sort of, you hear the analogy of like, you know, building the plane while you're flying it. You know, I, I think the better analogy is more like, you know, you're flying in a biplane and someone decides in mid-flight to swap out the, you know, radial propeller engine with a jet engine and hit full throttle, and then you wonder why the plane's falling apart. You know, it's, it just, you know, we're not really built for this. Part of that means that, you know, I agree, this is not going to be, you know, a one-time thing. People will vote by mail, more now, I think, because they'll realize how easy it is, how comfortable it is. If you thought the lines yesterday were tough, keep in mind that about 180,000 people, 170,000 people voted by mail yesterday. And so, imagine what the lines would have been if they hadn't done that. And so, you know, I think there does need to be change, you know, we need to change some of our procedures, we just have to change the way we do things here, because we're going to, you know, the people are going to go with this way in terms of voting. I've started a list, really, of things that need to change, things I think need changed in the law in Harrisburg, things that we need to change here in our procedures. It's on going three pages strong, bullet points, things that we have to look at. I was talking with Commissioner Ken Lawrence in Montgomery County and about it, and he said, you know, I bet you my, your, my list looks just like yours, because he has a list just about as long that he's picked up on. So, we certainly hope that there's some change in this, because, and, you know, obviously, it being a presidential election year and, and, you know, the anxiety level of, on both sides being as high as it is, certainly doesn't make things easier. You know, if this were rolled out in the municipal election year, you know, would we have had sort of the same kind of crushing pressure to do things as speedily and having to do it the way we did? Probably not. But, you know, we have to be prepared for a worst-case scenario, and I think, overall, I think we've, we've done really a tremendous job. But no, I, I agree with you that this is, this is not a one-time thing we're going to deal with. We're going to have to recognize that we have changed the way we do it.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, and we will meet again in two weeks.